Victory mine, or make our mines up for us.
Twenty collegians to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comment right off the get go?
Hi folks, Bill Money, I'm Randy Johnson, I'm the Adams Township Supervisor. I'm here tonight to discuss with the board tennis courts. I have two minutes, so I've got to make them brief. There's three options on these tennis courts. Either we fix them, which we already have a quote on, there's only three entities left up to it. That's us, the school, and the village.
Wheatland's out?
Huh?
Wheatland's out?
Moscow's out. So what we need to do is get a plan together, it's either give it to the school, give it to the township and let the township give it to the school, split the amount of money and you fix it in three, or we're gonna dissolve our interest in it. We're gonna recommend the school dissolve their interest in it and give it to the village and let you guys fix it. School will then no longer carry the insurance onto it, which they carry now. We'll no longer have any interest in it either. But either way, it's been years, years and years that we've been discussing trying to fix this. We need to get it done. Like I said, three options, alright? So I'm asking the board tonight to kick it around. You don't have to vote on it tonight, kick it around, make a decision, because before spring, before summer hits, something's gonna be done with that. Okay?
You said you had it cool?
Yep, Dalton asphalt, hundred and nine thousand bucks.
Wow.
But they won't tear it up, they'll go and pulverize it. Pulverize it and then they're gonna lay asphalt over it, guarantee it'll never sink, won't crack. Guaranteed. So that's the way we're gonna look at it. You know, what we'd like to do, and what we're asking the village to do, is to donate that to either the village, if the village donated to the school, or to the township, and the township is gonna give it to the school for a consideration of one dollar. And it makes it all legal. Okay? That's fine, that's fine.
So we would be responsible for a third of a hundred and nine thousand?
Yeah, it comes to like thirty-five thousand by the time it's all done. Three ways, thirty-five thousand apiece. Gotta get it done. I mean, if you go down there, and the only good thing for you guys is the school's carrying insurance. Something happens down there, the school's gonna cover it. It's gotta be done. You know, as unusual as it sets. Second thing, um, we have a, and this is a drain thing. Have a drain down here at the bus barn, are we responsible for those when they plug? Is that us?
I guess I did realize your head was down there.
Supposedly, supposedly.
With a covey drain or?
Supposedly, it's a building drain. We must be into a sewer.
Where is it at?
It's out front. Would that be just a regular drain drain? Because if we're in it, we have to be in, we don't have a system or a side drain.
Not to be a smarto, but east side or west side out front?
North side. Right there, right in front of the big double doors.
Oh, right in front of the barn?
Yeah, is that us? Because if it is, I'll get someone in there. But if it's you guys, I'd like to find out if we can get it fixed. Okay, do that. Alright, thank you for your time.
I agree with Mr. Johnson that it is time to do something with that down there, but I would question what happened to the Recreation Commission, um, represented from each entity, and the original ratios that each had an interest in it. Uh, Mr. Johnson stated a third each equal, um, has that been changed or? I'm just curious about that, you might want to look into that.
Well, it wouldn't be changed because the way we haven't heard it said in the past, it's different percentages for each.
It was, but Moscow and uh-
But I told you it would be three people now.
Moscow and Wheatland held smaller portions, I think Adams Township was around forty-eight percent, maybe forty-six percent. I think you guys were around twenty. If my memory serves me right.
Not that much, but-
It might not have been quite, it might have been like nineteen or... And then the school, their portion and the other two entities, but-
The school's still gonna cover the insurance?
Well, they're gonna take, they're covering the insurance right now. Uh, what we need to do though, since there is no more five entities that are involved, and according to legal, they, all they have to do is write a slip saying they withdrew. Then it reverts back to the other entities still involved. Now that we dropped two entities and we're down to three entities, doesn't seem fair that one entity would carry the majority of the bill when it's three entities that are involved now.
And all I'm saying is that you had your original ratios, and when the two withdrew, those might be distributed equally, but you still would have probably an unequal, not an even third ratio. I don't know all the legal implications you might run into, but uh-
Well, we've had lawyers look at it.
And is it not still, is it not still the Recreation Commission that meets and advises? How did that go away?
It never has met and they're not meeting now.
It's true, they haven't.
Let's uh, let's table this. My counsel, discuss it.
Sure, thank you.
And uh, we just have to hash it out, figure out what we wanna do.
Okay.
First off, we gotta come up with the money.
Well, you know, it's up to you guys. One way or the other, it doesn't hurt our feelings if it goes to the school. The school then can decide whether or not they want to get a grant or how they want to approach it. It's easier for one of them to get a grant than the little scrawls.
It's nothing to sign it over.
Well, if you sign it over, it doesn't cost you anything, you're not losing anything. It's not like you got a great big interest as far as getting it fixed or... Surely we have not been in a big hurry.
I don't know if there's a flyer or not, but you got to, you go to the County Community Foundation. The village put in a request, the school put in a request, and the township put in a request, you could probably get sixty thousand dollars. Come along with that.
It's worth checking out.
I'm writing, okay.
Well, I appreciate it.
It's always been, ever since they started talking about giving it to the school, and it wasn't just me, though I've been the one that's been kicked on all the time for it, not willing to give it to the school, if the school closes up and then some individual buy, let's say Al buys it, Al buys it, that's no longer public property. And then now you gotta run everybody off that's been using it.
Well, and I understand that, I'm knock on wood somewhere.
And it's got the ball banging behind it. Everybody uses them summer?
Everybody, yeah. It's the same thing with school property, I mean, any individual can go play on the playground. Anybody can go out and hit balls on a ball field. You run around the track, you go to the softball field. School property is open for the community, that's exactly what it is. A public school, belongs to the public. So tennis courts would be no different. That, all that would do is open it up for use in the phys ed department, or use in the summer rec department, or use for the public come out, play pickleball, or play tennis, or basketball. It used to be, uh, when it was first put in and it was brand new, that was used a lot. A lot. Now it's in such disrepair, it's a hazard. There are cracks that you'll lose your foot in. Imagine if you have a little kid stuff and want to snap a leg. Now we're into a live building.
I like the idea of Al. Check one with the County Foundation, each, the three entities and see how much we could get.
I was gonna say you like the idea of Al buying it.
That's an idea, thank you.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, I'm gonna go add my bit.
Alright, thanks.
Let me eat, maybe I'll go with you.
Cupcakes?
Yeah.
No, they pay them. Kinda crock.
I want the cupcakes tomorrow, I'm out.
Any other comments? Consent agenda, we need Treasury report bill approval in last month's minutes.
I'll approve it.
Second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we need approval for the special meeting for the budget, which was on February nineteenth. Did everybody read that one?
Yes.
Okay, we need to approve that.
The motion to approve special meeting on February nineteenth.
I'll second that.
Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Whole business. Before we jump on the lawnmower, I finally got a confirmed quote. If we do the donuts around the north south Hillville Street on the manhole covers, they're gonna be sixteen hundred dollars apiece. I told him to put it on the agenda and if we decided we didn't want him to, we'd call him up and tell him different because we've got plenty of time to pull out. But it needs to be done because those are pushing down.
He's just gonna do that when he does the roads, right?
When yes.
Okay.
That's gonna, for what it's worth, that's gonna save us five hundred dollar delivery fee for the equipment to show up because it'll already be here. And then they'll do the signage and all that, that's gotta, because it takes twenty-four hours to have that, to do that. Alright, so I've reported that, now purchase of the lawnmower. Robert?
Alright, so we found one.
Pardon me?
We sold that Steiner. The old one. And we did find a lawnmower. Um, it's pretty fourteen grand, pretty much. So yeah, you have it, yes.
That's brand new?
Brand new, yeah.
It's got a like-
Is that the one from Sprats?
And how much should we sell the sign up for?
Yes, nine hundred thousand, five hundred.
Sorry about that, Miranda.
No, it's okay, I pointed it in the meeting, I knew how much it was for.
The one Bob was referencing to is a new model for grasshopper mower, it's a G three-three-seven. This has a sixty-one inch deck, thirty-seven horsepower engine on it. Uh, fuel injected, it should-
So that we're good out here, that white of a deck?
Yes, it'll do good everywhere where we need it to be used. And half speed, so they're not running three and a half ton a hour, they're picking up the Steiner. So it should be pretty, more, more, being brand new, it'll have a three-year warranty. So, and it's local, takes itself to road, so. Parts and everything are very accessible because most of the decks that they use are the same kind, so the belts, everything we had are all the same. So there's no reference to things going bad and kinds of.
Just for public knowledge, Bob, how much was a John Deere over the god for a curler, a green marker?
Close to nineteen.
Well, the minimum was like plus sixteen and a half or something like that. Yeah, we shopped around quite a few places. John Deere was like sixteen and a half to twenty-one or twenty-two thousand for their high end, for their diesel. Sprats, obviously carries a few different brands, they had a couple Toros that were within that realm price of thirteen thousand. Uh, they priced a few of the grasshoppers out for that, and one diesel, I think their one diesel was sixteen-
Sixteen-nine or something like that.
For their diesel. And they were all within comparison, so they were pretty much the same stature.
But we do have all of the courts, except anybody's.
Yeah, Bob should have.
This is off the best one from the line.
Yeah, it'll come with the fancier seat on it, four-rotors, roll over protection. It doesn't have like all the crazy bells and whistles on it, like additional lights and all that stuff, which we don't need it, but it's, I've tested one of these mowers, it's the new product for them this year. It would be one that I would add to my stuff if I was gonna be buying another big robust mower, I think we'll have good luck with it.
And purchasing local is a good thing?
Yes, yeah, and it's also the own of the, this panel, stuff on it or anything like that, so.
Like you said, parts and stuff.
Fifteen hundred something, yeah, yeah, they, I will attest to that, they carry, I would say ninety, ninety percent of that stuff is in stock, so if we snout a belt, we need something, they've got it, it's usually very simple to fill it out, get it on, or fit it.
Question?
Joe?
Is this your turn?
Yes.
How's that gonna handle that side though?
Well, they're still gonna use the other Steiner for around the ponds and such as far as I believe, right, that's what we're gonna stick with.
Zero turns for the parks and anything flat. The Steiners, four-wheel drive, you'll do the hill, and anything that goes up, you know, like out of the lagoons, you gotta wave.
So on top of the lawnmower, we're also looking to replace in our broom, on our, on our broom, uh, for snow removal or dirt removal for the Steiner we have now. It's three-quarters of the way gone. We've gotta drop down as far as we can get it. Might be able to finish out the summer with it. But I think, uh, the ones I found, they're about two hundred bucks. Depending when we get it, we might be able to get a better deal, depending on what time of year we get it, I guess.
Was that just from the bristle replacement?
Yeah, just the broom, just the broom itself, yeah.
Okay, let's.
But I bring that up because if I could find one, forty, fifty dollars cheaper than work just going ahead and get it. We use it frequently in the summer too, so.
Let? You know, I'm part of the quorum today. Let me make this suggestion. If Bob finds one that's two hundred dollars or cheaper, would council approve, while he is street commissioner, to approve buying that, along with, for what it's worth, my approval, so that there's two of us saying yes, along with Bob finding it. That way, we'll save money and we don't have to say we'll buy it right now, just-
Be on the hunt for it.
We can be on the hunt for it. Is that permissible?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's all I got.
Now back to the grasshopper. Either we want it, or tell Bob to keep looking, or keep looking or make the mortgage on the town's asphalt.
I don't think we're going to invite the grasshopper. I think we gotta, we got one here that knows what he's doing with them.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't second that's using that, so.
I believe in the price of it.
We need a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor of buying the grasshopper? Close? Of the grasshopper. Spring cleanup. Ellie has called and we can get in on May twenty-fourth, everybody's kinda wanted to move it back a little bit, get it off Mother's Day weekend. She's got dumpsters, or can get dumpsters for May twenty-fourth, is everybody okay with that?
Last Memorial Day weekend. I don't think that would probably be the best weekend to do that.
Yeah, it is.
Well, maybe we- If she can move it up one week, everybody-
Really, on the seventeenth or the third? Yeah.
Well, the third is Mother's Day.
The one, the Mother's Day?
Nope, yeah, the- The tenth would be the weekend of Mother's Day.
So on the seventeenth would be about your one open weekend?
Yeah.
I'll have her call, we can do that. Alright?
Yep. Yeah, I didn't realize that, but you're doing that now.
Well-
I think that way, just the thirty-first is definitely Saturday.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on. Did everybody get their quote from Milo Electric? When Bob and Levi were changing all the wall plugs to upgrade the room and everything, they had trouble with a breaker out here in the fire bond. And it's the old style, push it in, when it breaks, it pops out. And we had to call Milo up to come in. He replaced one, he said he didn't have any new parts, but replaced one with an old one, came back the next day and replaced that one. Right now, we're working, we're running on that breaker. But the other day, I was in the boys' room, and they blew the fire whistle to test it, and the light went, ooh. So Milo's done a lot of work for us off and on through the years. Um, I don't have a second quote, and I was surprised that he got this to us and it was the price that it was. Um, total including materials and labor to change out that breaker box and put in the new, most newest style, flick the switch. Twenty-one hundred and forty-five dollars. It really needs to be done.
I, because the last I think the boxes were pushing by six and a half, it's through the box, and it got more. So it's really hard.
And then you got all the breaker switches.
Right.
And his labor.
Two hundred amp service, some of the breakers are in the range, that's good.
So.
I'll make a motion then, and we'd like to change that out.
Got a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, okay, we're back to the streets, Bob, you got anything to report? Okay.
I don't know.
Levi, you got anything to report?
We've been working smoothly, just waiting till the grass grows down.
Okay, last month, we had twelve calls total. Um, eleven was medical, one was a fire alarm. The only thing I have is we need some, uh, update some of our medical supplies. We got on, um, the website where we purchased the majority of them. Um, our C collars are expired. Uh, we need a blood glucose monitor and eye gels, and then the bracket that holds the eye gel in place, and the CO2 detectors that go on. Um, total, and that's getting three C collars. Each for adult and pediatric. Um, there's three sizes of the eye gel, and that's getting two of those in case we use one we haven't backed up. The total is two-hundred-and-eighty-nine-sixty-six to get all of that.
How much is two sixty-nine?
You said that were three for adults and three for kids?
Uh, three C collars, three adult collars, three pediatric, kids' collars. Uh, one, uh, blood glucose monitor, um, two eye gels in three different sizes, so two apiece. Um, the bracket that holds the eye gel in place, and then CO2 detector, which is two of those.
I'll make a motion for you to buy the two-hundred-and-eighty-nine-sixty-six supplies.
I'll second that.
Wait a minute, I'm still right.
Yeah, it's still right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, close? Thank you, well, Dallas.
Other thing, um, our pulse ox still works, but it's getting buttons on it, are getting real, like when you push them, they're sticky and you can't read them anymore, what that is?
Button?
What's that? It's a pulse ox, ox, pulse ox, it takes your, um, your pulse, it takes your oxygen and your-
I'm sorry, I didn't know what you were talking about.
Yeah, I found another one on Amazon for a hundred and eighty dollars, and that does adult and pediatrics. Um, I'd kinda like to update and replace the one that we have. I mean, it'll turn out, you just gotta keep pushing the button a couple of times, and water comes on. The buttons are cracked and broke and-
Do we get brown with that?
Yeah, can we, this, this tape ask? Um, I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
In favor?
Aye.
Close? And you-
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Street commissioner, you got anything?
Um, talked to Ellie the other day, we had a concerned resident about their sidewalk area down near Main Street. Um, Ellie is looking at getting a couple of different bids for it because the gentleman drives a large tow truck across it, um, he claims it weighs eight thousand pounds, like a regular pickup truck. In my research, it weighs closer to twenty thousand pounds than what I've captured. Um, so she's digging into looking at a couple of different options to replace or repair that portion of the sidewalk, but he would have to eat the depth.
Is it East Bay you said?
Yeah, it'd be all passed by cat right next to cat there. Um, he's within budget, willing to possibly have this portion of the sidewalk deeper as he drives over it. If, if the bu, if his budget will allow it. If not, he would have to probably seek other alternatives for that, so that if it does break again, it's not-
Is it roped up that bad?
It's pretty bad.
Okay.
Yeah, going up the hill towards Dallas's house, it's, it looks like I walked down through there with a sledgehammer and just broke every piece down through there.
I have another one on the sidewalk, Ruth Daniels, down on the curve. Um, her sidewalk's all broken up from a tree that was removed.
Okay.
And so she wanted to bring that up because she showed me pictures and it's bad.
Yeah.
You know where she lives?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
She wanted that brought up tonight, to check that out, because she really needed something done from the tree being removed.
Yeah, and so this one's the same kind of thing, there was a tree there at one point that was removed within a last, I'd say ten years. And I don't think that's necessarily been a problem, I don't think the truck has been a problem, I don't worry either, but it could be with new concrete potentially, especially if we only pour it at what our standards are for concrete, so. Um, we're looking at a deeper grain through there, so the heat is running over these boughs, we don't want to pay back for that.
Yeah.
For that amount.
She showed me the mess one day, and it's quite a mess down there, and all that way.
Well, I was, but it's from the tree damage she said. I was gonna suggest we work toward under Old Street on that, but-
Yeah, we've got to do it too, so.
Bob, did you say when the tree damages the sidewalk, we can get Act fifty-one money, extra for that?
Yes, it falls in a different category, yes. And there's like- And there's like, I have a list back there of like three of them that need it bad, and that was from the trees that were recently cut down that caused those to be real bad.
Yeah, probably from.
I don't know how far they can go back, as far as, you know, right ten years, but.
And I don't know when Ruth was taken out down there, I don't know, last year before, year before, so that's something a couple of years.
Yeah, definitely worth looking into, see how far we can.
We may have to split that three hundred feet and branch out.
We have before.
To keep moving around to get, hopefully get caught up with it.
Get the bad bad, yeah.
Yeah. That was it, that's all I've got, everything else looks good, boys are doing a good job.
Excellent, yeah.
So, talked about, about a few other things, but that's it, nothing super crazy, maybe moving towards next winter, but we'll, we'll redo that stuff later on.
Is that the only thing that Ellie got you to bring up? Okay, finance committee, you got any exciting stuff to do?
I think so.
Okay. Fire committee?
No.
Got that covered, parks committee, building and grounds. The only thing on building and grounds that I can think to report is, they've gotta put the laminate flooring in the bathroom, and the hallway up there by the door. And then he's gonna bring in, whatever that stuff is, I call it baseboard, but goes right around on top of the carpet.
Turnboard.
Yeah.
And he said we can, he can match it up to what's in the handicap bathroom.
Good.
This is brighter.
One more please.
Sewer committee, I know Ellie's been getting information around for that guy that was writing our grant, so, that's best I can report, I don't know where we stand on that at this time. Orbit committee got anything? Okay.
Personnel?
Personnel committee, you're in charge.
I'm speaking on behalf of personnel, um, we would like to propose a twenty-five cent raise an hour for Bob, for the new year. And we'll need a motion on that, and then, uh, he'll have a call. That says twenty-five cents an hour raise for the year, and then, uh, bonus at Christmas time. Would you bring it to that?
Just, Bob?
Yep.
Did we do anything for Levi?
Well, not at this time, it was just Bob, then we've gotta discuss him.
Alright.
I thought we discussed both of them, didn't we?
Well, we talked about it, but, um, she didn't give me the amount that we settled on.
Okay, cause we talked about both of them.
Right, but she didn't.
What I was thinking she said.
We did.
But we didn't settle on the Levi according to what she told me the other day.
Probably did.
So we need to, what was you thinking?
Your thought?
I don't have my notes, let's make access, which notebook's on my way here.
Well, I got what she left me.
Oh, actually.
Well, my notebook had no paper left, so I grabbed a new one.
Yeah.
I think it's, I need to pull tabs.
Say what?
I'll, I'll follow my notes, I know I did take notes.
Miranda, I was thinking she.
We did.
Note.
We did, we had both of the other things, as far as I knew, so.
Put down my notes either, she didn't leave me that.
No, and my notebook was full, so I grabbed a new one. I went without the door, and I didn't grab yours, my notebook. I would say table, and so you did both of them at the same time, so they're both discussed.
Take them till next month, and then we'll do both.
Yeah, cause I know that there was more discussed. I thought we made. I don't have my notes, so I'm switching things.
Okay, we're up to that.
Unfortunately left me.
This is gonna be a fast one. Okay, any other board comment you want to make?
I have a tree on front of my house that keeps falling, I had to go and clean up the road this afternoon, cause big, big chunks like this were coming out of that one tree. But every time we have a, a little bit of warning, stuff comes out of it, and I don't know which one to give, is it by my driveway or the next, but it makes a mess. But I haven't cleaned up the road today. Thank you, Mr. Streetman, I cleaned it up for you.
I mustn't give it a bramble.
I did want somebody running over it.
Okay. Any other public comments?
I, I, go ahead, Al.
This is the earlier, carpeting looks nice.
Girls that.
Painting and carpet.
Was the girls that picked out paint, carpet, and the laminate. I'll take all the credit you wanna give me, but it was the girls that did it. I just called up and said this is what we want.
Things big difference, those are not.
Should break this room, even the carpet.
The entities on the rec commission just really have been negligent on getting together, I, I, even going back to when I was in, Jason just, you know, we'd tell him to call a meeting, and somehow it just didn't seem to get gunned, done, he couldn't get people together or whatever. So I would reckon that if you were to relinquish your interest in it, it would be kinda immaterial, what I stated before. Uh, and I would at least give Randy a little credit for trying to get this thing done finally.
Yes. No, Brad said he had a commitment to go to the place. Shorten our meeting up fifteen minutes. Don't tell him.
It's on tape, Rick.
I sure like the idea of the three trying to get a sum from the community.
Brad did call me today, telling me he wasn't gonna be here, and, and he was asking me, we're ready for this, every thirty hours, we gotta give our employees an hour off work.
Yeah, then you, uh, second.
I told him at that time Ellie was coming in on an off day of her office hours to sit in a webcam.
Their get hours.
Supposedly, if the fire department is required to be here for training and extra meet, you know, Sunday meetings and that, they're supposed to be compensated for that after thirty hours for, for three hour, I, I don't know how. I'm hoping Ellie has an answer for that, but. I told him, I said anytime the guy wanted, we need time off, we just give it to him. And I paid him, I didn't tell him that, no. We just, Ellie will just keep track of the hours, but she did go in on that webinar, or whatever you call it, so, um, we're on top of it, he was telling me we had to have something in place by about twenty-something of this month. And I said, well, personnel might, personnel committee may have that all figured out, but until, talk to Ellie, we won't prove it till next month's meeting.
Any progress on that?
Well, they got their summons finally, and I didn't do nothing on the residential side. I'm waiting to see if they paid their taxes. And then, we're gonna push on that a lot harder, but, give them time, I, I'm not sure what we're gonna do about the, the west side of the street, because they've openly told me they weren't gonna, they were gonna let it go back for back taxes. And then, I found out that we were gonna put a lien on the property, it'd be on, in the books by last September.
Yeah, they were passed up your date.
So, I decided we'd work on the other side of the road, and see what happens.
I think it was especially during summer, I think it was.
So we got their summons, you said?
Yes.
Yep, they got their summons. And but, anything else?
Motion to end the meeting?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, stay here, end the meeting, I don't know.